Good afternoon. This is the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It is Wednesday, June 14th, 2023. It is 1:05 PM. The session is set to go until 4:30 PM. This is a hybrid meeting. We're at 3,000 Pacific Avenue Southeast, Room 110. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mahia. I'm the Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Ty Mensah. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. Also in the boardroom, we have a room full of staff who joined us today to talk about the rates briefing for HR, Central Services, IT, and Financial Services. And so, County Manager?
I'm sure the board was just eager to get this briefing going. But as you know, this is just one of the many first steps, one of the first steps that we need to go through when you will be having budget deliberations this fall on the biennial budget. And this is really of course the doing business internally. You will hear additional perspective on that in more detail. Today, we will not be asking to make a decision. This is for you to listen to the conversation. Edab will bring this item for your decision on Tuesday during, for you to consider because we need to build this into, into the budget as, as you may be remembering.
So no decision today, but a decision will be requested on Tuesday?
Correct. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it over from here. Robin Campbell is Assistant County Manager. And my focus is the internal service. And that covers a broad range of things. So Romero's gonna bring up the PowerPoint, and I'm gonna ask you, Romero, to go to skip that one. And let's start here. Because as you all know, internal service costs provide a foundation providing, to provide services to county citizens. And the types of activities that you'll hear about today, information technology, central services, human resources, and then I'll speak a moment about financial services. Those are all services that we could not provide external services without. And there are things like building maintenance, phones, computers, paychecks. We're not going to keep staff onboard to provide services if we don't pay them. So it's those types of things that we gain efficiency from providing in an internal fashion. And we bill out those costs in accordance with best practices and cost allocation rules. And you've heard me say, state law requires us to have one fund not benefit another. So the way we do that is through cost allocation. But these are essential services that are just part and parcel of providing services to citizens. There are three types of internal service funds. There's the maintenance and operations funds. Those are the cost of the day-to-day work that each of these offices do. There are reserve funds that are essentially savings accounts. So we have reserves funds for large IT systems, vehicles, buildings. And there are other reserve funds now in the, in county, but those are the big ones that you'll hear about today. And then there are risk funds that are essentially insurance-type funds. The risk pool being the biggest one that you'll hear about today. But unemployment insurance is a risk-type fund. And we have others. We'll identify them as we go. But those are the three types of internal service funds. And we treat each one a little differently in how we accumulate money and bill back based on rates. So the little symbols you see here, the little graph, is we provide a service. We have to bill it back to users, and we develop a rate to be able to do that, a rate per service. And that is what the board is required to do. So if we go to the next screen, we follow accounting standards that require fair and equitable allocation of costs. Cost allocation is done through these rates, and we use the rates to create charges to all of our customers. And the development of the rates, they're forecasted using data based on past expenditure and anticipated increases. And then at the end of the fiscal cycle, we reconcile. So there are two ways of doing allocation, and you'll hear both methods today. One is prospective, where we estimate what our costs are going to be in 2024. And then we build the rates around those estimated costs. And the other method is retrospective, where we're billing out exactly what we spent on a two-year lag. So we'll identify as we go which method we're using. And then we divide the costs amongst our customers based on what they use. And you'll hear about different types of inventories that we take. But it's all in close coordination with our offices and departments to be able to develop the rates. So that is the general background. From there, we're gonna, I'm gonna, in a moment, turn it over, and you'll hear from each of the leads to provide the services. And I just wanted to say financial services is not with us today because of a accident, if you will. I'm not going to go into details, but there was an accident that the person had that is the lead on creating the rates. So we've given financial services a little more time to do that development. So you won't hear from them today. I will tell you that we're using a 5% increase in the current year's rates as a placeholder. And once they're done developing the rates at the end of July, you'll have a meeting with them to review their rates.
Commissioner Edwards, you have a question. So go ahead.
When was the last time we increased these rates?
The rates are reviewed every year in accordance with the state auditor direction.
And do the rate increases proposed match the inflationary rate?
No.
How about, oh, okay, when you say no, not, they're not as high as inflationary rate or more than inflationary rate?
You will see as we go. We don't look at inflation if you're referring to the CPI. What we look at are the individual costs of providing the services that we provide today. So the, you'll see the increases. Sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down. But it's driven on the services provided and the cost of those services.
Does our income coming in match what the proposed rates are going to be in total?
So in the funds that are retrospective, we collect exactly what we spent plus a surcharge to be able to cover current costs. And in the, and so, yes, it does cover the, the cost. And in the rates that are prospective, they are designed to cover the anticipated cost of those services out of those funds. And that's why we have a reconciliation at the end of the year. Because the directive is that an internal service fund cannot make a profit. So it's not like we're amassing money in these funds. In fact, the M&amp;O funds run pretty tight. But we are prevented by state rules and accounting rules from making a profit, if you will.
You're right. I was not looking at making a profit, but I am concerned about compensation for employees. And if that's taken into consideration as part of the cost of doing business as we move forward and reflected into these rates. So that's kind of where I'm going with all this.
We do not build COLA into the future rates. So should the board provide a COLA, then we're gonna have to recover it another way. We, we would change the rate. We, we, we don't, we, it's a, this is a maintenance level proposal. This is the cost of maintaining the services at their current levels. And since the, a COLA is the prerogative of the board at a policy level, we do not include it in the proposed rates.
I guess I would argue that the current level requires that we adequately compensate our employees. So that's, that's why I'm kind of working this around to see how we're gonna make that fit.
Yeah, that is a different conversation that the board has to have.
No, but to go, kind of go back to the, to what Commissioner Edwards is saying is, or I mean, for clarification in my head, more than anything, is so if the board passes a COLA at the, and these rates have to be readjusted.
We'll adjust them at that point. If you, if the board approves any policy, because this also does not include, for example, I will be coming to you in the fall in my role as Director of Central Services and requesting a facilities technician. That's a policy-level request. It's not built into these rates. Should the board approve that, then I would add it to the rates at the end of the process. So if you approve policy things that affect the rates, I'll adjust the rates to cover the cost.
Follow-up on that. So then why do we approve them? Like, why would we approve this next week if we're not really gonna be making additional policy decisions until the biennial? And like, why are they not more important, like?
What you're approving is maintenance level.
Maintenance level.
It's maintenance level because we have to provide the cost of these services to all the other funds so they can build their budgets based on what they're going to be charged for internal services at maintenance level.
I understand that, but it's not really the actual number of what they're going to be charged just because of different policy decisions. So they're not really building, I mean, they're building their budget on some estimates more than anything, rather than actual numbers.
Yeah, I would not presume to build policy into these. We need your approval to go forward at the levels that we've set here.
I guess as we move forward, we don't know what we're gonna be settling some of our labor contracts for at this point in time. So how can we, I, I'm just trying to figure out, it's kind of the same questions the chair asked. How can we make these type of decisions? We don't know what our capital outlay is gonna be yet. And hopefully, that's gonna be pretty quick. We're gonna get there, I hope. But we don't know when, and we don't know how much. So we're kind of spinning our wheels unless we said something like, for Bruce's shop, it'll be, you know, it's 7% or something, because that's gonna be the cost of doing business.
Yeah, but I, I can't presume that you're gonna settle it that much.
Well, no, I, I know, don't, don't take it as I'm making a prediction. I'm just using that as an example that we're going through, we're putting staff through a lot of work, and commissioners are tied up, as are you folks. And it seems like we're really not gonna have a finished product if we vote on this on Tuesday. And I'm wondering where we're going and, and why the timeframe. Does the law say we have to get this done next Tuesday? Or is there a different timeline that is more applicable to the truth, and the truth being knowing the end facts?
So if, there's a lot of versions of the truth. I would say that this is the truth at maintenance level. This is a maintenance level truth, and we're asking you to approve maintenance level rates. If what you're saying is you'd rather not see this until you set policy, that makes it extremely difficult. We would not know what to put into the questica system to.
I mean, maybe that's the answer, because I don't understand everything you're doing, for sure.
The way that the county develops the budget, we tell offices and departments, here's the maintenance level cost of internal services. And they build from there. And we, you, you certainly won't pass a, there won't be an AIS on your agenda next week. There'll be a thumbs up during agenda setting to go forward with the maintenance level rates. You will pass a resolutions regarding the rates at the time you pass the budget. So, so you're not actually taking an action until then, but you're giving us a green light.
If I made it, the rates not only addresses labor, it addresses other elements. So, so building the base budget as we have is like, we, we, we bring all the current employees that we have and everything. And just, that's the base rate. That's the base budget that comes along to you. And, and, and at that point is, you know, you add whatever policy decisions that you make. And then that's the overall budget approval.
Right.
But we need to create a baseline budget for the board to work on what capacity you have.
But doesn't maintenance level, I mean, don't you already know what maintenance level is gonna be, what it's gonna require? I mean, we got the cost of inflation, and we're not gonna do it for less.
We don't add inflation in the maintenance level. We add, we, we adjust salaries based on the people in the current positions and current pay ranges. We don't adjust those for COLA. We, we take a look at, you know, what, what's the cost of postage? You'll, you'll hear as we go through this, the different things that we examine as we set maintenance level. Today, I couldn't tell you what maintenance level is. In about a month, I'll be able to tell you what the maintenance level budget is.
Is there, how come we wouldn't do that in a month then? Do, do this in a month when we know?
Because we need to put these into our budget system to get to that overall.
We're just taking a guess at maintenance level?
No. This is the proposed maintenance level for these services. But we have to set maintenance level county-wide. And to be able to tell you what the maintenance level is in each various fund, you'll see general fund. We split out general fund for this conversation. But all other funds will do that in the system.
How, how close would we be if we just said, okay, the inflationary rate as of today is X, that's what, that's the inflationary rate?
Close at all.
It would not be close.
Nope. Nope. So let's go through the presentation, and then we can come back to this.
Thank you. That just kind of gives me a baseline to work from, I guess.
Just so I understand real quick, the, if you said some are prospective, some are retrospective. To the extent it's retrospective, all that doesn't matter, right? Everything that these guys are talking about? Because whether we pass the policy, any policies we make in the fall wouldn't affect the rate, because we're looking back.
If you were to, so one of the things we're talking about in ERNR is do we need an additional mechanic? If you were to add that, we would need to, no, it wouldn't matter because we're doing it on a retrospective with a surcharge. So you are absolutely right.
And how many are prospective versus retrospective?
Retrospective is. Uh, retrospective is ERNR and that's it. I think ERNR. Oh, uh, the cost plan. Financial services is a hundred percent retrospective.
Yeah, financial services.
Yeah.
And ERNR falls under what of your categories?
They're under central services.
Services, okay. Okay, I'm just trying to make sure I can understand all this.
Yep. All right. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Sherry. Make sure you introduce yourself.
Sherry Ild, IT Director. Um, the rates, uh, we have come up with, ours are prospective. And based on what we know today. So for example, if we know the cost of a, a system is going to increase. And we chase down all of our maintenance agreements to find out if they're planning on increasing their rates for 2024. So what we come up with is as close as we can get based on what we know. So the increase, um, from the adopted 2023 rates to our proposed 2024 rates. And the increase is fourteen point nine percent, a total of two million forty-three thousand five hundred seventeen dollars. And that allocation is forty-eight point four nine percent general fund, fifty-one percent non-general. And then we support some non-county agencies, so that's less than.
Did you say who those non-county agencies are?
Oh, yeah, they are. Olympia, I can't read my own paper here. Olympia Air Pollution, Regional Planning Council. Uh, some of these we don't support anymore.
Orca.
Orca, I was like, it was, it used to be Olympia Pollution.
PUD, we do a lot for PUD. And TCOM.
So we bill them as well.
What was that dollar amount?
Two million forty-three thousand, or two million.
There you go.
More.
Five hundred seventeen dollars.
Couple more. Next, next dollar.
Okay, here we go. This is the breakdown.
Yeah. And this is overall for IT.
Yeah.
So.
Talk about each of the different.
Yep, go ahead.
Funds. So. Uh, the first one, IT Fund Fifty-two Fifty is our operations fund. The, the overcharge for 2022, two hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred sixty dollars. So that's part of, uh, the effect on our, that's the rebate. We'll be putting that back. And then our maintenance is up one point two million dollars due to Exella, Bluebeam, Cohesity, Microsoft. And our data warehouse solution. So that is increasing sixteen percent for IT. Uh, this, I'm sorry, should have started with the fifty-two fifty operations fund. Is split out between IT, GIS and telecom. So for IT, the total is nine million three hundred ninety-four thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars. Which is a sixteen point two percent increase over last year. And that's our biggest increase.
Can I ask a question on, kind of, what is all in that nine million dollars? Like, is it staffing? It's a program, the maintenance for the programs?
Yes.
Is it software equipment? Is there anything else that goes into, like the servers, for example, or?
Uh, well, it depends. Um, if it's a current maintenance bill that we pay, like on our server, then it would be included in here. But if it's a replacement, because we, you'll see on a different one that we collect for replacement of that equipment, so that would be included in here. So this is salaries. Our current maintenance that we know we're gonna have to pay for our systems and our software and.
So help desk.
Applications, network.
Application development, the program managers, the, um, all the people you see.
Cybersecurity.
Yep, cyber security is in here.
So with the ERP program or TC Connect.
Uh huh, whichever you like to call it.
Delayed. Did that delay meant go into, you know, did that?
Policy level.
Was that a factor into this?
In some way, it was a factor because we had already extended, um. The temporary employees pay through the end of the year. Oh, so this isn't, that's twenty twenty.
No, that's gonna be the policy level.
Yeah, it's not in here.
This does include, however, the additional cost of having to pay for Questica, Eden. And Munis for an extra year.
Yeah, that's in here.
The extra year of maintenance for those systems into this.
Okay.
Are you saying it might come down because we're not implementing it anyway?
No, I'm saying will it go up because we're not implementing right away, just because of.
We have to maintain the existing systems.
Because we're currently in negotiation with Sierra Cedar.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm guessing those temporary employees will have to be extended for more time. Other than December, so that's.
That's gonna be in the policy level.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And then GIS, uh, Esri, uh, which is our geodata software. The increase in that is fifty thousand dollars. And this one, we have a surcharge instead of a rebate, because we didn't charge enough last year. Uh, so the surcharge is thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. Which we did way better than last year, so. And then telecom, um, the only, it's a one percent change. And that has to do with the surcharge from last year, seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. All right, that fifty-two sixty is our IT reserves, and this is the money we collect replace. Computers that are part of the ITRP. It replaces, um, our hardware. The network gear, the stuff that you don't see, but is keeping you up and running.
Basically a savings account.
Yes. And that one is only increased by four point six percent, or forty-three thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars.
And the way you calculate this is?
By, it depends. By, um, for the network and infrastructure replacement, we do it based on PCs. So if then we take the total number of PCs in the county and we divide our total cost by the number of PCs. And determine what each department and office has to pay based on the number of PCs that have.
We anticipate replacing.
I ask one more question.
Of course.
Does inflation play a part in this? Because as computer systems and programs continue to trend up. I'm wondering, you know, for example, when COVID, right, laptops were just skyrocketed because of. Everyone was acquiring them. So I'm, I'm wondering, right, is, how does that play into this part of things?
So for PCs, you're right, the cost of computers just doubled, um, during COVID. And so we collect those on a five-year replacement. So the first year, we probably didn't collect enough for it. Because the budget was already done, et cetera. But in years two through five, we will increase our rate collection to make up for the difference. And then a lot of it, we base, a lot of it based on what we paid for it. So if we have a server that we paid thirteen thousand dollars for, and I'm just throwing that number out there. Um, we collect over seven years the cost of replacing that server. Because usually they last about seven years.
So.
And there's an escalation factor into what we think it's gonna cost seven years from now.
And you're factoring whatever inflationary trends you would see into that.
Yeah, that's where inflation does play a factor in.
Another piece of that is that each, each, uh, company that we're doing business with. Is factoring in inflation in the price they're giving us to provide a service.
So I guess, I just want to connect the dots, because you asked, is inflation considered? You said no. That sounds, I was kind of scratching my head, but I'm listening. It sounds like it totally is. So I'm wondering, what is it that you would wanna see that's not being considered about inflation?
Well, because if we don't consider inflation, we're not gonna be able to keep functioning, because inflation.
But, I mean, based on what she just said, we are. They, if they're prospectively.
If we keep, if we keep charging more and more and more, but then pretty soon, we're not gonna have any money left to settle with our employees. That's where I'm really, that's the bottom line I'm going for.
And we did not factor in cost of living type inflation. For the stuff we have to buy. We have always estimated what's gonna cost at some point down the road. To try to get to what we need to collect or replace it.
Okay, I think I understand where this is.
Can I ask one more? I'm sorry, I just.
No, no, this is, this is why we.
And that's why I went first.
So I know the axon is a policy decision that the board is considering, for example, right? But that's having to do with a program that just kind of came up. And so with these. Rates, right, that, it only affects two offices. Like, would that get kind of broken down, I guess? Once you go into like the bu- biennial budget, for example, and then it gets split into all the different funds, probably?
Yes. So each, if you, if you look at slide six. In, under IT, and you see all those different, um, programs. Some of them are specific to a small number of offices. And some of them cover everybody, like Munis, everybody's impacted. So it's allocated across every office and department. But like, Exella is only for CPED, Public Works. And Public Health. So they look at the cost of that system and allocate it only across those departments. So it's looked at on an individual basis. When you get down into the nitty gritty details. There is a lot that goes into calculating how things are allocated out. So those, if, if we go down the Justice Premier path. Um, that will be charged only to public defense and the prosecutor, and it'll be a hundred percent general fund.
One more question is, so kind of just going on that same path, right? So some percentage increases are more in some specific. Offices or departments rather than others, depending on the services that they're.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
So it, it, it really just varies between.
Right.
Okay.
So we're showing you the bottom line for each of the funds that we administer. And then it's, the budget is allocated down to all the offices and departments. Which is the part we need your approval on, um, to do now. You, you're approving this, this high level. Here's the, what we think it'll cost. And then we're gonna allocate it across all the offices and departments and funds. And, and you're absolutely right. Some are gonna be more, some are gonna pay less. Um, it, it all depends.
Sure. Following up on Commissioner Mensah's question, though, if we're not figuring inflation in here. Then we've really got a problem, because inflation is coming and we can't do anything about it. So that's gonna be another ten percent on top of, say, seventeen percent. And it, it's gonna add up pretty quick here. We're gonna have to be stealing from Peter to pay Paul somewhere along the way.
So as we go through, I'm gonna ask my managers to say, here's how we factored in future growth. Because I think that you'll hear, we, we do not assume COLAs, but for everything else. Not even everything else, but for, for major cost drivers, the price of computers, the price of gas. The price of utilities, for things, postage. We take a look at where the market is going and try to estimate that. Because we need enough in our funds to pay for those things on behalf of the county.
Just like kids have.
It's the same process, probably pretty darn universal. Always have to have a place to start and get your base budgets to go in for all the departments to have their fund. And then come back and deliberate and know before the final adoption, they're going to have to be tweaked to.
Right.
Incorporate all the policy level conversations.
We don't do anything different in there than, than other jurisdictions do.
That's not what we hear with Lake Banjo District.
I know that that's not what you hear from the LMDs.
Different from any other jurisdiction. We stand alone.
Yeah, we really don't. We, we follow best practices.
Just checking.
National best practices. All right, so go ahead.
Uh, so those are the reserves. And then our large system replacement reserve, that one was recreated. Just, I, I think not very long ago, to start collecting money to replace these large systems. And that one has a five point nine percent increase. I think that has to do with, um. It has to do with the ERP. And what we think is gonna happen, so.
Right? So that's IT. And then shift to central services and I'll do the overview. We anticipate, uh, central services costs going up in total, seven point three percent. Uh, the impact on the general fund of the increase is roughly five hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. Um, and the total increase county wide is one point seven million. For central services. So that's, that's the bottom line.
Is that math right there? Customer allocation. Doesn't add up to a hundred. Is there something else in there? General funds forty-five, maybe?
The net increase percentage.
How, how can we justify a thirty percent increase in non?
Oh, increases. Previously, you had a breakdown of, of what percentage of the total is by general fund or non. That's not what this is saying.
So we'll go through the individual sections.
Commissioner Edwards had a question on the non-county agencies, the increase of thirty point seven percent.
Yeah, um, so as we go through each of the funds. I'll ask you guys to address why the costs are changing so dramatically. So admin and operations.
Good afternoon. Jason Ash, Facilities Manager. But then, facilities, we have the two funds. Fund five-two-one-zero and Fund five-two-two-zero. As you can see, five-two-one-zero, that includes our. M and O costs, our custodial leases and utilities. We have, for twenty twenty-three, we had eleven point two million. For twenty twenty-four, we are proposing twelve point one million. With a total increase of eight hundred and forty-five thousand. This equals a seven point four percent increase. As you can see with the breakdown, general fund, we have a seven percent increase, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Non-general, seven point one, two hundred and forty thousand dollar increase. And for the non-county agencies. As Commissioner Edwards was asking, we have a twenty-two percent increase. For the non-county agencies, our increases are related to basically the two customers we have are TCOM and BHO. Some of that is built into the proposed increases for utilities. And the major one is BHO had that expansion. So we have increased their square footage, which has greatly increased their cost for M and O and utilities. So, um, we also build in.
Triage facility.
Yes.
I thought we had that done.
No, it's an, it was an expansion.
It was an expansion, yes.
So they had s- s- ten beds, they added six? And they took over most of the rest of the building?
Isn't that all done?
Uh, the constructions, but now you've gotta pay for the M and O.
M and O, yes. We charged that.
That one makes more sense than on, uh, central, first, central services for thirty.
So the central services is a roll-up of what you're seeing now. That, that's the total, so this sixty-seven thousand is a piece of it.
It also includes the lease agreements that were agreed upon and signed, increases in those. Those were built into our rates. And then PSE is proposing an eight percent increase in their utilities for the next year. So that was also built into our rates.
So that's the inflation factor. The big piece of M and O, inflation is, is utility costs. Electric.
Gas, sewer, water, garbage.
The other piece of, so Facilities is not the only piece of MNO. And Jettie, would you speak to your parts?
Sure. Part of the Fund 5210, I also oversee the other parts, which is records, postal and countywide services. So on the records, we do see a slight decrease in records rates. And that, I believe, is due somewhat to the vacancies that we've had. With postal, there was a slight increase of about 23, 24,000. And that was the postal increase costs. And we also have a, a second vehicle for the mail team. Countywide services is where we do see an increase. That was, and if, maybe I should start out on what countywide services is. That has the people that take care of procurement and contracts, Open Gov. It includes the Second Assistant County Manager, Rob, and this is allocated by budget. So with that one, there is an increase that we see of about 295,000. So part of Jason's and I make up the Fund 5210.
All right. Talk about building reserves?
Yes. So the other fund that we manage is Fund 5220, which is a building reserves, as Robyn said, the savings account for the buildings. Previously, we had 1.88 million. Our proposed is 1.95 or 1.93 million, excuse me. A total increase of 48,000, 2.6%. As you can see, there are very little change to the general fund, 0.1%. Non-general fund would be 2.4 and then, once again, county ag-, non-county agencies is the bulk of that, 57,000, 54%. This, we look at the, the CIP plan and whatnot, the plan for the buildings for the next five to six years to try to make sure we have enough money in the reserves to cover any major projects or possibly any unforeseen issues we have with the building.
And the big increase in the non-county agencies, again, is the BHO. Because they have the increased square footage now that they pay in on for the triage center. All right.
Good afternoon. Bruce Roga, Fleet Services Manager. Fleet generates two rates to cover the costs of owning and operating county equipment. First one I'll review is the MNO rate, Fund 5410. This is a retrospective rate, as was discussed earlier, with a surcharge to cover projected cost increases. Cost drivers in 5410 are parts, labor to repair vehicles and equipment, and fuel. So these rates are reflecting 2022, 2022 actual costs. So actual cost increases in '22 were a 35% price increase in unleaded, over 50% in diesel, 10% in parts. The reason that the overall cost increase is only 5.1% is these cost increases were built into the 2023 rates in a surcharge because otherwise Fleet Services would run at a very large deficit. So that's why only a 5.1% cost increase is projected for 2024.
Most of that, what you're referring to is the inflationary costs of fuel, parts, tires?
Yes.
It's what we saw in 2022.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was one of our higher years. So we have, I was just back east a couple of weeks ago and gas is like a dollar cheaper. I was just wondering, is that local taxes or, or is there like geography of where the refineries are and the transportation costs? Or do you know what that's all about?
The, the federal government considers Washington in some, in a region called Pad Five. And Pad Five has very high costs. I don't think it's refinery. I think it's tax for the most part.
Ours is additional taxes.
Yeah, because I was out east too and I was like.
3.39 pretty much everywhere. It's, it's where, 3.39 now? Yeah, in New Jersey, Massachusetts. Oh, yeah, but not in Washington. No, it's like four, it's a dollar more.
10 cents more.
And I know how it is because I was just there.
And I drive electric cars, I don't really, I didn't, it, it, I hadn't thought about it in months. And I had to rent a car there, you know, and I was like, oh, gas is cheaper. Then I got home and it's like, no, it's not.
Going into today's meeting, I, I looked at AAA gas prices for Olympia area and they're 4.81 a gallon retail.
Okay, so $1.50 then, sorry, I under sold it.
So the large, the large price increases in fuel happened last year. So there was a surcharge built into the '23 rates, which is adequate to cover '23. We're not projecting another price increase in '24 for fuel. So that, that's one of the main.
Some benefit appears.
The second rate ERNR collects for is the reserve fund. Here we did see more of the, the impact of inflation because we don't build a surcharge in, we use projected costs. So the reserve fund collects money to the vehicle, so that we have funding to replace vehicles at the end of their life cycle. There have been significant cost increases associated with purchasing vehicles, the county purchases on state contract and cooperative purchasing. But just like what we've seen in retail vehicle purchases, the on-contract price increases have been substantial. A few highlights are sheriff pursuit vehicles went up 27%. Full-size trucks went up 25%. These are state contract numbers. And heavy-duty vehicles went up over 30%.
And we can get them, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, that's inflation.
That is inflation.
So I, I don't get, I can't understand that it's not inflation, but yet it is inflation. It doesn't make sense to me.
So what I, you asked, do we just build in inflation? And what we build in is the projection of cost for very specific things. Is that inflation? Yes, you could call that inflation. What you keep getting at though, in, in my understanding, is the price of labor. You keep coming back to the price of labor.
Well, that's part of inflation.
That we don't build that in.
I guess, why not?
Because I cannot presume to.
Price of labor isn't local, so we make it go up.
That's a policy level decision that the board is going to make in the fall.
Well, that's what you made that last year. You had a 2.5% cost difference during your budget deliberations. And you will be making perhaps some of the decisions of that this coming.
That in. And we don't build in a flat, whatever the CPI was. We look at each type of service and assess what our vendors are going to charge us.
Couple questions. I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask about, again, just trying to tie it all in my head.
Sure.
Of the policy decision we just did in budget amendment with the sheriff vehicles, right? And that was, we saw the inflation of cars. But then we also kind of changed the type of engine.
Right.
And so just how does it play now into the replacement reserve and how does it fit in?
Thank you for bringing that up because it does look strange. The general funds replacement rate has actually decreased.
Increased.
The reason for that is a large group of vehicles are getting purchased this year. So the funding needed to be available this year, which is why there was that request for the '23 budget. The effect of purchasing the vehicles in '23 means that we don't have a rate set for them in '24. We don't have the vehicles physically here. We don't collect rates on equipment that we don't have. Therefore, it's going to spread out the effects of this inflation and we'll see that price increase occur once the vehicles are on site. So we won't see that until the '25 rates. Because, because the funding was needed this year, it's not going to reflect in next year's rates.
Can I ask you a follow-up question, Bruce?
Certainly.
That's interesting. So I'm wondering, right, shipping delays was another thing that, you know, it's happening. And so how did that affect rates as people were ordering vehicles? And, or you were ordering vehicles, right? And you expected them to be here by a certain date and then shipping delays kind of kicked that out. So how did that?
That also contributes to a, a lower than expected replacement rate.
Okay.
The vehicles have to show up before we can start collecting on them. So even though price increases on vehicles were in the 25 to 30% range, we're seeing 10% this year. Yeah, 10.7% overall, and we'll see additional price increases in the following years.
County manager?
No, he answered the question about the general fund decrease.
Yeah.
All right, ERNR. So that includes Central Services. And we'll take a moment to swap and go HR.
I'll go ahead and take a break while we deal with that.
Yep.
Okay, five-minute break.
Uh, looking today is a conversation about the Human Resources Fund. And there's Tammy Devlin. Um, today's presentation is on the Human Resources Restricted Fund. We administer four funds. Um, I will be presenting on the Human Foundation Fund. Tara will present on the Benefits Administration Fund and the Leave Buyout Fund. And Tammy will present on the Insurance Risk Fund. Um, right, next slide. So unless you have any questions, I'll go ahead and get started on the Unemployment Fund. That's Fund Fifty Thirty. And Thurston County is a self insured employer for unemployment. So rather than subscribe to the unemployment insurance program uh that the Washington State Employment Security provides, the county covers its own obligations and and the fund was established to create a reserve for future unemployment. Currently, the rate allocation is at zero point three. And the funding mechanism is on the county payroll. So each office and department uh pays zero point three percent of their total payroll. H R administers the fund and budget based on salary benefits and employment taxes for zero point six of an F T E. And the goal is to have a fund balance of one point five million to two million to cover um up to two years of unemployment claims and expenses in the event of a major layoff, which we define as around uh ten to fifteen percent of our workforce. Uh, next, next slide. Thank you. All right, so this is the fund's ten year financial plan. Um, I'll go back to twenty eighteen. And so one of the things that Robin covered earlier is um we can't have more into a fund that than we need to uh manage it. And by twenty eighteen, we had four point six million, which is well above the high end of our two million. And so to reduce that surplus, uh, we did rebate in uh twenty eighteen of two point eight million. And then another two hundred fifty thousand the following year. So this helped us get to within our um fund balance.
When you say rebate to who?
To the offices and departments. Um, so just going back to twenty nineteen.
Can I ask, twenty eighteen was when the clerk's office? Was it when they, the whole budget thing happened and there was like an, I don't know if there was an underestimate or overestimate? And this was in a way to kind of?
This was one of the strategies we used to bridge.
Supplement the gap, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Similar to the um Superior Court, um, uh.
One day.
Right.
Yeah, one day.
Yeah.
I remember those emails.
Well, God, we could help.
We were. It just so happened that there was significant fund balance built up in this fund that we needed to pull down. And so that helped it all balance out.
So um, following the great recession, we saw claims um one year at eight hundred thousand dollars. But as the economy improved and people uh found jobs, um, we saw very low unemployment. In fact, in twenty nineteen, I think was the lowest year of claims at thirty five thousand five hundred. Um, once pandemic started, things changed and we started to see uh increases. In twenty twenty, we paid out ninety two thousand dollars in claims. And in uh twenty twenty one, a hundred and twenty four thousand. Last year, um, despite building a an increase, we saw the um claims spike to three hundred fifty thousand dollars. So as a part of a budget amendment, because that was above the uh two hundred thousand uh dollar spending authority that we have, we came before the board, increased that. And um fortunately, this first quarter in twenty twenty three, it dipped down to thirty eight thousand. So I don't think we'll get into the worst case scenario of um three hundred and fifty plus.
How does that fit with the fact that nobody can get enough applicants for any job and there's jobs everywhere? How could anyone even be? I mean, what is it that?
So so the uh numbers in in twenty?
Unemployed. Now, don't you have to show that you're looking for a job?
You do.
Jobs everywhere. Why does that fit?
There are a lot of jobs. Well, so in twenty twenty two, the increase was due primarily to our COVID temps. They um, majority of them were laid off. So what this tells me is that there are jobs and that the people that were unemployed were actually able to get those jobs and fall off our our claims. Um, currently, we know there are just not enough people to fill the jobs. Um, it's just fewer bodies. That that's just the reality. There there there's more jobs than there are people that are either willing to work. Uh, we're seeing the uh, the silver tsunami, people are retiring. There are actually fewer people going into the um workforce. So that could be another one hour presentation we can talk about that.
But there's more people are paying checks to for employment than in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
In twenty twenty two.
Right.
Right, correct.
Isn't everything you just said would make that number, those numbers be reversed?
Well, I think in twenty twenty two, the spike was due to, we had two, three months in a row where we laid off a a great number of COVID temps. So they filed claims.
Twenty twenty two. At some point, we hire a hundred fifty temporary employees.
But in twenty twenty three, why are we still projected at three hundred thousand?
That's thirty eight thousand. So if you um, maybe, maybe this way. Oh, so that's just what was forecasted. So this, now that I'm getting true numbers, that number starts to go down. So when this was submitted, we had not received the first one.
We did the budget for this year. We were still in the middle of the layoffs. We didn't know that it was gonna drop off or not. So there needed to be sufficient appropriation authority to pay if the claims came.
You're saying it's coming in quite a bit less.
Correct. So I uh planned for the worst case. And in this situation, we're seeing the reverse. So we're not seeing the high claims. Um, I have not seen the second quarter, but I don't, do not anticipate uh a hundred claims like we saw last year. So just in terms of that zero point three rate, um, we don't see a need to increase that at this time. So our our recommendation is to leave it as is. And as always, we um consult with budget and we work closely with them to make any adjustments as needed. And with that, I'd be glad to um answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Why wouldn't it be prudent to put a little more into the fund, looking into the future?
Could, but why would you?
Well, because I think there's problems coming up.
You think we're gonna have large layoffs?
I don't know. We're gonna have to do something. Something's gonna happen. I don't see settlements coming right away. I I mean, I just, that's all. I'm just saying, why not be cautious is all. And what would it cost us to be just a little more cautious?
You cover healthy end of fund dollars on this.
Right.
You cover the end of fund dollars is one point seven, one point six, one point five, the bottom, the bottom, the line.
Yeah, one, one point seven for twenty three.
So that should be plenty to cover, even if we had a massive layoff.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so what we try to have enough fund balance for ten to fifteen percent um if we were to lay off in great numbers like that.
Okay, and that hasn't happened for a long time.
Not since uh, starting two thousand eight through two thousand nine is when we did uh about a hundred layoffs, I guess I recall.
A hundred layoffs is like eight percent or something. If we have thirteen hundred employees. So even a hundred layoffs would not be anywhere close to fifteen percent.
It it shouldn't.
Should be, should have, should have double amount that we need.
Yeah, so that's why we keep, try to keep it.
It's a healthy fund balance. It's it's one of those insurance type pools.
Okay, we are back from break. It is two oh six and we left off with human resources coming in. So passing it to Robin, Maria.
Straight over to Maria.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. I'm Maria Colte. It's my director. Uh, looking today is a conversation about the Human Resources Fund. And there's Tammy Devlin. Um, today's presentation is on the Human Resources Restricted Fund. We administer four funds. Um, I will be presenting on the Human Foundation Fund. Tara will present on the Benefits Administration Fund and the Leave Buyout Fund. And Tammy will present on the Insurance Risk Fund. Um, right, next slide. So unless you have any uh questions, I'll go ahead and get started on the Unemployment Fund. That's Fund Fifty Thirty. And Thurston County um is a self insured employer for unemployment. So rather than subscribe to the unemployment insurance program uh that the Washington State Employment Security provides, the county covers its own obligations and and the fund was established to create a reserve for future unemployment. Currently, the uh rate allocation is at zero point three. And the funding mechanism is on the county payroll. So each office and department uh pays zero point three percent of their total payroll. H R administers the fund and budget based on salary benefits and employment taxes for zero point six of an F T E. And the goal is to have a fund balance of one point five million to two million to cover um up to two years of unemployment claims and expenses in the event of a a major layoff, which we define as around uh ten to fifteen percent of our our workforce. Uh, next, next slide. Thank you. All right, so this is the fund's ten year financial plan. Um, I'll go back to twenty eighteen. And so one of the things that Robin covered earlier is um we can't have more into a fund that than we need to uh manage it. And by twenty eighteen, we had four point six million, which is well above the high end of our two million. And so to reduce that surplus, uh, we did rebate in uh twenty eighteen of two point eight million. And then another two hundred fifty thousand the following year. So this helped us get to within our um fund balance.
When you say rebate to who?
To the offices and departments. Um, so just going back to twenty nineteen.
Can I ask, twenty eighteen was when the clerk's office? Was it when they, the whole budget thing happened and there was like an, I don't know if there was an underestimate or overestimate? And this was in a way to kind of?
This was one of the strategies we used to bridge.
Supplement the gap, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Similar to the um Superior Court, um, uh.
One day.
Right.
Yeah, one day.
Yeah.
I remember those emails.
Well, God, we could help.
We were. It just so happened that there was significant fund balance built up in this fund that we needed to pull down. And so that helped it all balance out.
So um, following the great recession, we saw claims um one year at eight hundred thousand dollars. But as the economy improved and people uh found jobs, um, we saw very low unemployment. In fact, in twenty nineteen, I think was the lowest year of claims at thirty five thousand five hundred. Um, once pandemic started, things changed and we started to see uh increases. In twenty twenty, we paid out ninety two thousand dollars in claims. And in uh twenty twenty one, a hundred and twenty four thousand. Last year, um, despite building a a an increase, we saw the um claims spike to three hundred fifty thousand dollars. So as a part of a budget amendment, because that was above the uh two hundred thousand uh dollar uh spending authority that we have, we came before the board, increased that. And um fortunately, this first quarter in twenty twenty three, it's dipped down to thirty eight thousand. So I don't think we'll get into the worst case scenario of um three hundred and fifty plus.
How's that fit with the fact that nobody can get enough applicants for any job and there's jobs everywhere? How could anyone even be? I mean, what is it that?
So so the uh numbers in in twenty?
Now, don't you have to show that you're looking for a job?
You do.
Jobs everywhere. Why does that fit?
There are a lot of jobs. Well, so in twenty twenty two, the increase was due primarily to our COVID temps. They um, majority of them were laid off. So what this tells me is that there are jobs and that the people that were unemployed were actually able to get those jobs and fall off our our claims. Um, currently, we know there are just not enough people to fill the jobs. Um, it's just fewer bodies. That that's just the reality. There there there's more jobs than there are people that are either willing to work. Uh, we're seeing the uh, the silver tsunami, people are retiring. There are actually fewer people going into the um workforce. So that could be another one hour presentation we can talk about that.
But there's more people are paying checks to for employment than in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
In twenty twenty two.
Right.
Right, correct.
Isn't everything you just said would make that number, those numbers be reversed?
Well, I think in twenty twenty two, the spike was due to, we had two, three months in a row where we laid off a a great number of COVID temps. So they filed claims.
Twenty twenty two. At some point, we hire a hundred fifty temporary employees.
But in twenty twenty three, why are we still projected at three hundred thousand?
That's thirty eight thousand. So if you um, maybe, maybe this way. Oh, so that's just what was forecasted. So this, now that I'm getting true numbers, that number starts to go down. So when this was submitted, we had not received the first one.
We did the budget for this year. We were still in the middle of the layoffs. We didn't know that it was gonna drop off or not. So there needed to be sufficient appropriation authority to pay if the claims came.
You're saying it's coming in quite a bit less.
Correct. So I uh planned for the worst case. And in this situation, we're seeing the reverse. So we're not seeing the high claims. Um, I have not seen the second quarter, but I don't, do not anticipate uh a hundred claims like we saw last year. So just in terms of that zero point three rate, um, we don't see a need to increase that at this time. So our our recommendation is to leave it as is. And as always, we um consult with budget and we work closely with them to make any adjustments as needed. And with that, I'd be glad to um answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Why wouldn't it be prudent to put a little more into the fund, looking into the future?
Could, but why would you?
Well, because I think there's problems coming up.
You think we're gonna have large layoffs?
I don't know. We're gonna have to do something. Something's gonna happen. I don't see settlements coming right away. I I mean, I just, that's all. I'm just saying, why not be cautious is all? And what would it cost us to be just a little more cautious?
You cover healthy end of fund dollars on this.
Right.
You cover the end of fund dollars is one point seven, one point six, one point five, the bottom, the bottom, the line.
Yeah, one, one point seven for twenty three.
So that should be plenty to cover, even if we had a massive layoff.
Yeah, so what we try to have enough fund balance for ten to fifteen percent um if we were to lay off in great numbers like that.
Okay, and that hasn't happened for a long time.
Not since uh, starting two thousand eight through two thousand nine is when we did uh about a hundred layoffs, I guess I recall.
A hundred layoffs is like eight percent or something. If we have thirteen hundred employees. So even a hundred layoffs would not be anywhere close to fifteen percent.
It it shouldn't.
Should be, should have, should have double amount that we need.
Yeah, so that's why we keep, try to keep it.
It's a healthy fund balance. It's it's one of those insurance type pools.
Any questions? And Tara will present on our uh benefits and leave buyout.
So Tara with mine? I'm here to talk about Fund Fifty Sixty. That's our Benefits Administration Fund. This fund pays for the two point seven F T Es that we have on the benefits team. Those employees administer all of our benefit programs, they handle, you know, new employee orientations, any changes employees have to make. Um, they also handle all personnel changes that employees make throughout the years, new hires, terms, promotions, things like that. Um, the rates for this fund are allocated out by F T E. So each office and department is paying a fair um proportion of the rate. Uh, this fund, we strive to have a two hundred thousand dollar reserve to cover at least three months operating expenses. We've also um added in a little bit of a uh like ten thousand into that two hundred thousand number for unanticipated A C A liabilities. Um, should that ever happen. So for twenty twenty four, um, we are proposing that the rate be three hundred and fifty five thousand. Uh, for twenty twenty five, uh, we're proposing three hundred and sixty five thousand. And for twenty twenty four, um, thank you. That proposal is about sixty thousand um over twenty twenty three. Um, the reason for that change is primarily the um employee changes that have happened on the benefits team. Um, in the last year, um, half, well, out of the two point seven, two of those employees are completely different than they were last year, the last time we did this. So um, we have a really good team, which is, which is great. But um, any questions about the benefits fund?
You didn't break this down. My math shows that's about nineteen point five percent increase.
That's quite possible. I I did not do the increase percent. I'm sorry.
Because the, well, what you're saying is three fifty five and three sixty five is this year's two, two ninety seven. Is that the same thing?
Correct. Yeah, and the big reason for that is the two ninety, when the rate was two ninety seven, the two staff members that were there at that moment in time um were honestly cheaper. They were at the lower end of the salary range that they're in. And then the two employees that we have working on this team now had a lot more experience and were brought in at at much higher set in the range.
Yeah, so see, if you look at the financial plan for twenty twenty three, we're anticipating costs this year to be slightly higher than revenues, so that needs to be adjusted.
I'm just curious.
Okay.
Okay, so next up, we have Fund Fifty Eighty. Uh, this is the Leave Buyout Fund. This is a fairly new fund. I'm sure um you all remember creating this last year, in January twenty twenty two. The fund was created to help offices and departments pay for the um cash outs uh for leave when employees retire. That's something that I must have struggled with for years. Currently, the fund is set up to pay twenty five percent of a cash out when an employee retires and includes their vacation leave, sick leave, alternative leave, um, depending on their leave plan choice. Last year, the first year that this uh fund existed, we um paid for twenty five percent of the cash outs for twenty six employees. Um, that helped out sixteen different offices and departments. And the fund paid a total of um roughly one hundred and four thousand dollars. Twenty twenty three year to date, so far, um, through May fifteenth, we've paid out about fifty five thousand dollars. So a little bit, we're projected to be a little higher than we did last year. The rates are currently allocated as a zero point three five percent surcharge on salaries. And with this fund, with it being so new, um, what we would like to do is have a couple more years of experience of what's happening in the fund, what the buyer, you know, the cash outs actually are, what's coming in. So our proposal is to both keep the um rate at zero point three five percent and also to keep the payout, uh, the twenty five percent of retirees' leave. Keep everything the same for at least a couple more years until we can see just what this fund can do before we look at uh making any kind of changes. Any questions?
Questions on this fund?
So this is providing some relief to the offices and departments who are asked to absorb leave buyout. Um, and I completely agree with the proposal to to um leave both the revenue piece and the payout as is, because we need a lot more experience with this. But some of the options the board may consider in the future is instead of only paying twenty five percent of the cost, you could play a greater share out of this fund. Or you can um reduce the amount we're collecting into the fund if you only leave it at twenty five percent. But right now, we need a better feel for what the um payout's gonna be.
Is this a sixty forty split on contributions, you know, from general fund and?
That's a good.
And all that.
Do we have a feel for how much?
It's pretty close to sixty forty. I want to say maybe fifty seven.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. That's typically what it is when salaries are called.
It's like E R and R for leave buyouts, right?
It is. That's exactly right. It's a.
They're just shuffling their money through their saving through upon their payoffs and the ones that benefit.
Yeah, it's less of a hit when someone decides to retire.
Okay. I mean, frankly, it should be something that the, it should be something that the head of the office and departments just vote on, right? If they want to spend more to pay more, why would we care about that? Like if they'd say, I'd rather pay a higher rate.
We fund this at maintenance level.
Yeah.
Um, and so you all set how much gets paid into this fund and how much we're gonna pay out. Um, it's not that they're absorbing the cost of paying into this fund in their budgets. We will add any amount. It's gonna stay flat. So but the amount that we, if if you.
I see, so we're all smoothly, yeah.
Yeah.
But the offices and departments absorb the delta.
They, yes, they absorb the seventy five percent.
It's seventy five percent.
But when you created this fund, you added additional appropriation to their budget so they could pay it, like we do with all of the internal services. All right.
All right. Tammy Devlin, Risk Management. I'm gonna be covering Fund Five Oh Five Oh. Um, this fund supports three point.
This fund supports 3.2 FTEs. We run the safety program. This also is where the insurance, county's insurance portfolio is paid out of. Insurances for liability, property, cyber, pollution, the underground storage tanks we have, bonds for electids. And then we have a third-party administrator that assists us with their workers' comp claims. And then we also have a small, we set aside a little bit of money for Public Records Act violations since it's not an insured loss, so that fund covers that as well. We manage the risk management and do assistance with loss control and emergency preparedness. Our ending fund balance or beginning fund balance, you'll see on our financial plan, we actually get confidence level. We hire an actuary to determine what monies we have to have set aside to pay claims. We just did that. And so that's based on what our current deductible is for our insurance. And that's all required by these RCWs. Just switch to the 10-year financial plan. I actually got good news. Can you read it? Did you hear me?
Well, you never bring good news. I was just preparing for this.
I know, this was like, this is the one I really wanted.
Yeah.
That's where I always make me go last.
So if you look across the top, let's start at 2023 projected. When we got our very large insurance premium costs, last year, we made the big call and we increased our revenues in 2023 and our expenditures to cover those increases. And so when you see between 2023 projected revenue and 2024, there's only a 6% increase. And then if you look at the expenditures.
See, I didn't let the cat out of the bag after I talked.
You'll see between 2023 and 2024 expenditures, it's an 18% increase. And I'm anticipating about a 6% increase over this anticipated projected cost in 2023. And that's primarily because we have a lot of claims that have lagged and I haven't been able to get them closed because they haven't been able to get through the court systems or remediated. Primarily, it's a lag due to COVID sort of thing. So I'm anticipating a lot of those expenditures coming out in 2023, is my hope. Again, these are forecasts. So based on what we're hearing in the insurance market and the cost of claims and closing those, I go through and I anticipate. So it's an 18% overall increase in costs projected between 2023 and 2024. And then 2025 and, and, oh, can't even talk. I'm anticipating another 10%. And then from '26 through '29, I did a flat 8%. So I think that's pretty darn good news because we made that big, the big jump last year. This, most of the budget here is allocated out by FTE. The general liability, it's 80% FTE. And then we take into consideration frequency and severity of claims. So if one, one department over another has higher claims and more costs, they get a little bit of cost boost to try to control their claims. And property premiums are pretty much allocated based on custodian who's using. We take 7.4% of our general liability and allocate out based on who's driving vehicles, since that's a high risk as well. And other than that, it's pretty much by FTE.
And then talk about the fund balance. We have to maintain a fund balance at a certain.
Yeah, the very top line, you'll see a 4.8 pretty much all the way through. We, every, about every four to five years, we hire an actuary to determine, based on our $250,000 deductible, how much money we have to have set aside. And that 4.8 is about 90% confidence level at that $250,000 deductible. So we're looking for the best.
And that 90% confidence level is kind of what we were discussing last year as we thought that huge hit, whether can we go down on it? And it was like, no, we have to stay at that level. Okay. Refreshing my memory.
Can you provide an update? I think we were looking at the option of going self-insured.
I'm.
I mean, I, I'm not suggesting that, but I think that was probably explored, that idea.
We did. We, we went through, did the actuarial analysis to figure out what, what monies we'd have to have set aside. We were going with the assumption, we've, we've worked with our broker. We were going with the assumption that we would be able to get maybe an insurance company to quote at a $1 million deductible. So going from a 250 to a $1 million deductible. The one insurance company that, that we were really relying on is pulling out of the market in Washington. So they're still looking. So I don't have an exact answer. But I'm getting close to getting those numbers put together to be able to come back into a briefing.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Rob.
Just a quick question. On the bottom line, the percent change year-to-year, is that to reflect about the ending fund balance? Correct. So it has for 2024, pardon me, it's a reduction of 18.6%. But the, the ending fund balance is the same as '23.
I think it's comparing 2023, the 3.9 to the 4.8.
Oh, so it's a reflection of the beginning fund balance, not the ending fund balance? Okay.
So what you really want to look at is that top line, that beginning fund balance. That's your, that's your true.
Thank you. I just wanted to put the closest line together.
Exactly.
Questions?
See, that was good news.
Way better than I.
What a difference a year makes.
You probably don't want to talk about what's coming down the pike at this point.
Please finish this in a good note.
Let's enjoy the little. Give us a moment.
Okay. Anything else, Robin?
That's it.
I will bring this on next Tuesday for your direction.
Okay, well, thank you to Central Services, to HR, to IT for coming in and.
Yep, more to come on Financial Services.
With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
So we got you here.